All right, red light, cameras on. Let's go ahead and call the order. The regular meeting of the Oakdale City Council, March 25th, 2025. Sarah, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Morecambe?
Here.
Councilmember Severson?
Here.
Councilmember Willenbring?
Here.
Mayor Zabel?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. First up tonight is the approval of the agenda. Councilmembers, we have an amended version in front of us. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I will move.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Next up, we have meeting minutes. First set workshop meeting minutes from March 11th, 2025. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? Look for motion.
So move.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those meeting minutes are adopted. Next up, regular meeting minutes from March 11th, 2025. Any changes or corrections on these? I'll look for motion.
So move.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those meeting minutes are approved as well. Next up, nothing under public hearings tonight, so we will move into open forum. Before we open the floor for that, I have two proclamations that I would like to read. Whereas, oh, first is recognizing Autism Acceptance Month. Whereas, on March 4th, 2021, the Autism Society of America officially announced the shift in terminology from Autism Awareness Month to Autism Acceptance Month. And whereas, April aims to celebrate and promote acceptance for the condition that occurs in one in every 36 children in the United States. And whereas, autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the world. And whereas, autism is a complex developmental condition affecting the patient's ability to interact, communicate, and progress, and has not one but many different subtypes. And whereas, first held in the year 1972 by the Autism Society, Autism Acceptance Month emphasizes the need for public awareness to promote acceptance, celebrate the differences, and be more inclusive towards autistic individuals around us. And whereas, with the autism diagnosis rate increasing fast, we take these 30 days in April to celebrate the differences of, learn more about, and empower autistic individuals. Therefore, I, Kevin Zabel, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Autism Acceptance Month. We're also issuing a proclamation recognizing Fair Housing Month in the city of Oakdale. Whereas, the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined in federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas, the city of Oakdale is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas, our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. And whereas, more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists and many communities remain segregated. And whereas, acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. And whereas, the city of Oakdale is an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of Oakdale. Therefore, I, Kevin Zabel, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the city. At this time, we'll proceed with open forum. If there's anybody in the audience joining us tonight that would like to step on up to the podium, share anything that's on their minds, please feel free to do so. We ask that you begin with your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up for council consideration. Or, not council consideration, we'll just keep going. Consensus motions. Councilmembers, we have A through E and G through K in front of us tonight. F was pulled with an agenda amendment. Councilmembers, are there any you'd like to pull for individual consideration? Chris, did I have one I was gonna pull? No, never mind. Okay. Councilmembers, can I get a motion to approve consensus motions, A through E and G through K as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions, A through E and G through K as presented.
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those consensus motions are adopted. Next up, let's check in with our advisory boards and commissions. First one that met was the Environmental Management Commission. I am their liaison. They continue to work through their 2025 work plan. They have some... Totally lost my train of thought. They're also, they also reviewed stats from last year's community cleanup last fall. So now we have those aggregate stats, and so they reviewed that and heard council's feedback for hosting that event again in 2025, so they are very excited. They are also working on our EcoFair. So Oakdale's first EcoFair taking place on April 27th. I'm looking at staff nodding, yep, April 27th at Castle Elementary. Lots of great vendors. I think there's like two dozen vendors. There's gonna be food trucks, there's gonna be activities for the kids. The EMC commissioners will be out there helping at that event, interacting with members of our community, so they're very excited to be taking part in that event as well. Tree Board also met on March 18th. Councilmember Moore, you are their liaison.
I have notes. Tree Board talked about a lot of things. They spent much of their time considering Chapter 22, Article 6 of the city code, which covers disease control and tree trimming. So it was a really interesting opportunity to hear their thoughtful feedback on that part of our code. They wanted to remind everyone about the Arbor Day Tree Giveaway, which is Saturday, April 26th. If you are registered to receive a tree, you will attend from 9 until 11. If you are on the waitlist, you will attend between 11 and 11:30. They are very passionately reminding everybody that this has moved locations. This year, the tree giveaway is at the North Fire Station. So new location, North Fire Station. The registration for the tree giveaway will open on Tuesday, April 1st at 8:00 a.m., and the link to the registration form and details will be in the Oakdale website once it opens. Residents must pre-register and select their preferred type of tree and pick up time. The times will be in 15-minute increments. I'm telling you, I'm a commercial for the Arbor Day Tree Giveaway. There are 200 trees to give away, there are four different options. All of that information is on our website. I also think it's really important to notice that it, or to note that it has been noticed in the last few years, the number of people that register to get their free tree and do not show up to pick it up. And so they are building in new processes to track that information. So if you do register for your tree, I highly recommend showing up on that day. You don't want to end up on some list somewhere, right? So it's a wonderful, an amazing, incredible opportunity inside of our, inside of our community, and the Tree Board is really looking forward to having another successful year.
And really cool, the event was founded 50 years ago exactly, in 1975.
That is very exciting.
By a former mayor. Yeah.
That's so cool.
Yeah. So, big milestone. Milestone year for our event. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Award of bids, nothing tonight, so we will go into staff updates, community development. Luke, come on down. We have a conditional use permit to consider.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, the location of this request is 7360 33rd Street North. This is the former LA Fitness Site. The property is owned Plan Unit Development, or PUD, and the request is to establish a church there, or convert the former gym to a church. I would like to note that places of worship are allowed in all zoning districts in Oakdale through the conditional use permit process, and I would like to note that there is federal law that we have to follow. It's called RLOPA, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. It essentially requires that religious assemblies and institutions be treated the same as any other secular assembly or institutional use, such as a city building or a public school facility. So access to the site, there is an existing access off Hemingway. As you probably know, the intersection of 34th and Hemingway is a bit tricky to navigate because you can't make a left turn there or go westbound on 34th Street. In other words, so at the request of both the city and the county, the developer commissioned a traffic study for the proposed change in use, and I'll talk a little bit more about the traffic in just a moment. So the existing facility, or the building itself is approximately 45,000 square feet, and the main assembly hall would accommodate up to 915 people. For parking requirements, this is based on the size of the assembly hall and also the associated office space. So, per code, 247 parking spaces are required, and the actual site, there is 300 existing parking spaces, so the parking requirements haven't met. The applicant has stated that there will be no exterior building expansions or additions, and all renovation work will be limited to just the internal portion of the building only. So as a reminder, conditional use permits are subject to certain review criteria that's found in the city's ordinance, and staff finds that the CUP review criteria has been satisfied as detailed in the Planning Commission Staff Report that's in the agenda packet tonight. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing for this request back on March 6th, and they recommended approval. And staff recommends approval of the request subject to just one condition here, and that is that wayfinding signage shall be added at the intersection of 33rd Street and Hemingway Avenue, and also along 32nd Street to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Essentially, the wayfinding signage is intended to help direct drivers to make the proper west or left turn lane on 34th Street, which is actually at Marketplace and 34th, or right next to Speedway. And I guess if you're curious about what that signage will look like, there is a similar signage along Helena Avenue, so if you're exiting the Sergeant Pepper and Wildmore property, there's some signage that helps direct people to make the proper turn to get back onto 694. One final note here, the traffic study was prepared by the developer's engineer, and it concluded that the levels of service at the intersection within the neighborhood would not be negatively affected by the use. The county had the opportunity to review the study, and the city engineer, of course, reviewed the study and concurs with the findings. So although there is only one condition of approval here, staff is suggesting but is not requiring, or adding additional conditions of approval here, that the applicant implement the recommendations that are found within the traffic study, and these include the following: adding a future sidewalk connection from the church to Hemingway Avenue, developing a shared parking agreement with the adjacent property, conducting further traffic analysis, adjusting internal driveway alignments, and also working with Washington County on potential traffic improvements. Staff is also encouraging the church to consider other methods to help improve the traffic flow for Sunday services, such as having volunteers direct traffic for those Sunday services. And I can imagine there, maybe there's some additional questions here about the traffic flow that staff would be happy to answer, and the applicant is also here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. We appreciate it. Councilmembers, let's start with questions for Luke.
I have one.
Councilmember Moore, take it away.
You talked about parking 300 spots. With 915 people as the capacity, if we think about the highest of the holiest days and the most attendance, is there an overflow opportunity? What if people start parking along the side streets there? What is the plan for at over-capacity parking?
Sure. Thank you, councilmembers. And maybe if you would want the applicant to also elaborate on that, but...
Sure.
So I do want to point out, in the traffic study that was prepared for this, one of the recommendations was to work with the adjacent property, so that's a multi-tenant building, that's Alina Health Clinic is there, but I believe there's like 80 or 90 or so additional parking spaces. So that's an opportunity for the church to work with that property owner on like a cross parking agreement.
Thank you.
Following up on that, though, so some of those recommendations in the traffic study are the requirements? Is there an element of time associated with them? So you mentioned one was building the sidewalk to Hemingway. Is there a time element connected to that, saying you have to do this by X date as a condition of this permit? Or is it, we'd like you to do it whenever you get to it?
So, Mayor, the staff is not necessarily recommending any of those. We didn't incorporate those into our, into the resolution that you have before you tonight. It's a bit of a wait-and-see in terms of, you know, what, how the operations or the church, in particular, Sunday service would actually look like if this is going to be an issue gradually over time, then it would be an option for the church to consider.
Okay, but my concern with the wait-and-see approach is with a conditional use permit, we can't come back later and put on additional conditions, right? So, to Councilmember Moore's point about overflow parking, should requiring an agreement be in place be a condition of this permit? I guess that's what I'm getting at, is like, it's great to say these things, it makes sense that, you know, if you don't have enough parking, but we get one bite of this apple. So, once we approve the CUP, unless the conditions are firm and say it has to be done if there is a time element attached to it, or that agreement has to be in place, I'm having trouble squaring that. Like, how would we come back later and say, okay, well, it turns out you've had a lot of excess overflow parking, now we need you to go get this agreement with the property owner over at Alina? How do we go about doing that?
Well, Mayor, I guess from the staff's perspective, when we reviewed this, we felt only strongly about the wayfinding signage, that that would be the one requirement that we would request to be included, but the other suggestions are, they're good suggestions, but from staff's perspective, and relying on the code, relying on our expertise, our engineering staff as well, we don't find that those other suggestions rise to the level of requiring, or rise to the level of actually being conditions of approval.
What, can you elaborate on what that level is? Like, what would rise to the level of requiring a condition? Is it disruption in the neighborhood by excessive street parking? For me, that feels like that would be something that could warrant or should warrant a condition, and we just don't have a lot of streets there. You know, it's one street, Hemingway, and I guess 32nd. So if that is a recommendation that came out of the traffic study, I'm having a hard time understanding why we're not making that a condition of the permit.
Mayor, and I might have to pull in our city engineer here as well here. But with the capacity that the parking lot has currently, we felt that it was sufficient for the congregation, and the applicant noted in their staff report, or their accompanying narrative, that yes, the assembly hall can accommodate up to 900-some people. Currently, their congregation out of St. Paul, or the church there, is only around 700 or so.
Brian, anything you'd like to add?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The one item that we had with that is a lot of the signing, the directional signing, if parking restrictions are necessary, these would all be within the city's control to do that, and so we could pursue ordinances to restrict parking on Hemingway Avenue if there appears to be a problem. That's purely within the city's discretion. The directional signing would be installed within the city right away. Again, that's something that the city could direct and install. So these are items that were very minor, they appeared only if necessary, so we didn't see any reason to make that a condition of approval.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Councilmembers, what other questions do we have? I had one. Yeah, I was just curious, I mean, 917 people and a conditional use permit, but on occasion, churches, especially evangelical churches, have big events, so if a lot of people are coming to attend for some event, at what point would they be required to get a special permit? Is it at 1,500, is it 1,000, or is... I believe churches are exempt from special event permits, correct? I seem to recall.
Stumped me there. Mayor and Council, I don't know for sure. I don't know.
And it's really just...
Looking at a gym down there, like, I feel like, maybe.
When you say, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, when you say special permit, what?
Special event permit.
Oh, special event permit, oh.
I don't know.
Good question. I'd have to look at the code, and certainly if that event triggered the need for a special event permit, we would enforce that provision in the code, they would have to get that if it's needed.
Our city clerk is looking it up, so keep going.
Okay. Why not, I was gonna say, Mayor, if you'll allow it, I mean, these are common things that happen in any church planning, so if there's someone here that can speak to kind of the traffic pattern and the use of the facility, I think that might help too. Yeah, if the applicant wants to speak to that. Welcome. Please begin with your name and address.
Chuck Beekler, 16625 Firestone Path in Farmington, Minnesota. I'm an attorney. I've been helping the evangelical church in the acquisition of the property, and then also on this conditional use permit. Pastor Steve here can speak to some of your questions. I think one of the things Luke had mentioned, the congregation being 700, that's actually like 400 to 440 adults, 700 would include children. I think they're parking on a weekly, they only have one service on Sunday. The parking is about, what, 200, 250 cars at most? They currently are located in St. Paul with no parking lot whatsoever, it's all street parking. You know, so they're accustomed to that, but the size of their congregation, although it's 915 in the assembly area, right now anyway, unless it grew dramatically, their congregation's far below that at the moment. And a lot of those are children, and they're carpool together, but if you have specific questions on their services and special events, then Pastor Steve can maybe speak to that a little bit.
Sure. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Stefano Salmo. I'm the pastor of TPI Evangelical Church. We do not have special events in our church, so that's the only thing I want to comment on.
There we go.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, City Council, the code does not, does list a group that are exempt from special events or situations. Churches are not exempt from special event permit requirements, so. Now, the next question would be, well, what triggers? I don't know, I'd have to check on that, but...
I would point to, so I live, there's a church across the street from my house, when they have summer events, you know, they utilize their parking lot, and it pushes everything out in the street, and we've had instances where blocking intersections, blocking hydrants, I think our standard for special events permits have been when it creates a strain on city services to enforce the law, et cetera. You know, so increased traffic enforcement would be an example, or emergency vehicles can't get down the street. Jim?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, yeah, I accessed the code, and the code does actually define special event, so listing, so if they were to do one of those things, rallies, bicycle races, I mean, there's a whole list here, so.
We got real creative with that list.
So, if, it sounds like they won't be doing any of those, but if they happen to want to sponsor or do a special event, and it triggered this provision, they would need a permit.
Perfect. Well, and really, my comments were really, I'm in favor of what you're doing there, just want to make sure there's a mechanism for safety, for the police to be involved, for traffic, so that it goes well, whatever you choose to do. Councilmembers, while we have the applicant, or any questions for the applicant directly?
I just wanted to say that I'm glad you chose Oakdale as a new home for your congregation. I'm really excited about everything that this community has for you, and vice versa. I'm also really excited, Council, about those businesses that are all down there, and that Sunday rush for, you know, Aldi or Starbucks or whoever else comes in over there. I think it's just a win-win for everybody, I'm really excited, thank you guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. You can have a seat, thank you. My only question isn't tied to this project or to this application necessarily, it's more so just a concern about traffic patterns off of Hemingway. We've fielded some neighbor property owner complaints about cars going north on Hemingway, even though it's right out only, they go left to kind of fish into that turn lane for Aldi. So when I saw the amount of cars that would be going out there, the question I posed to staff was, would it be advantageous to make Hemingway a one-way, and then redirect all traffic down 32nd to Marketplace and the stoplight? It doesn't have to necessarily be decided because of this, it can be decided later, but it was something I wanted to put out there and say, eh, you know, we've, Chris, you fielded complaints from, who's the gentleman that owns the storage facility?
Mr. Raleigh?
Yes. That, and I've seen it personally, going to Aldi, like, cars going the wrong way just so they don't have to go down the light and U-turn around, so it is a concern that I have. So I just want to put it on our radar and say, eh, it may warrant a change later. And I don't even know what that process would look like, and I'm sure PINS would have some thoughts as well, making that a one-way. Also, tenants at the Harland, there'd be a lot of traffic in their front yard as well. So, not directly related to this, but I do want to just recognize concerns from adjacent property owners of the traffic patterns in general, and it's newer, so. Councilmembers, any other questions? Got a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2025-19, approving a conditional use permit for a place of worship church at 7360 33rd Street North, with the condition included in the attached resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a couple seconds. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that CUP is approved, welcome to Oakdale. Let's check in with our city attorney. Jim, what do you have for us tonight?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, nothing specific, but happy to answer.
You never do. I mean, one of these times, he's gonna bring something, and we're gonna be scared. Jim, thank you. Let's turn to our right, check in with Chris, our city administrator. Chris, what do we got?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. I do have one update, we're gonna do an update for you on the new Public Works Facility, a progress update. So we have here our owner's representative, Don Tyson, we also have Kraus Anderson here to assist, Eric is here as well, so Don, do you want to take it away?
Thank you, Chris. Evening, Mayor, City Council. Once again, Don Tyson, your owner's rep for the Public Works Project. And it's, excuse me, as Chris noted, Eric Quam, our project manager, is here. Before the meeting started, I was in the lobby, and we also have four University of Minnesota civil engineering students, and they have a class assignment to learn about a project and see how the city council works, and I told them you couldn't find a better project or a better council for tonight, so. Four young gentlemen back there. Just to show along I've been around, I told them that here I graduated from the U, and they weren't even born yet.
I'm sure I fall into that category too. I guarantee it.
Alrighty. So our agenda topics tonight, a little bit of background, recognizing that new residents watch these presentations, and certainly we have new council members this year. Progress on the construction progress, just a quick slide on the budget, and an update on the schedule. So as background, this is the site in blue here, this odd-shaped, not quite a rectangle. It's at 3200 Granada Avenue, this is Old Highway 5 up here, now County 14, this is Granada Avenue, this is 32nd Street. So 3200 Granada Avenue, so a nine-acre, a little bit over nine-acre site. It was previously owned by 3M, as it was a superfund site, and as you know, 3M did a environmental remediation on the site, and we now have an environmental covenant filed with Washington County. The cleanup was approved by the MPCA, and the city has a no determination, no association determination letter that says if anything does come up in the future, it's still 3M's responsibility, but 3M did a great job out there cleaning that up. Little bit more background, last June, we opened up bids, U awarded the project on August 14th, and also at the same time signed a contract with Kraus Anderson Construction to set the guaranteed maximum price at that $24,383,980. And the total project cost is set at $31,392,230,324, and the difference there is you have soft costs involved, architectural fees, permits, all the furnishings, the technology that has to go out there into the building. So the architect HCM, architects, they started by showing you this is what the building's gonna look like, and I just want to, for reference, point out, this is the office area, and we call this Area A. This is the fleet storage area where all the trucks are gonna be stored, this is Area B. And this back here is the operations area where the mechanics will work, you have the sign shop, you have the parks, and you have a vehicle wash bay, and this is Area C. So that's what the architect said it's gonna look like, and this is what it looks like today. So here's Area A, and you can see the steel framing has started. This is Area B, and you can see this is where the trucks are gonna go in here, and the doors where they come out. And then here's Area C with the walls up, and you can see the doors there coming in there. But, we didn't just get here overnight. A year ago, we started, and actually it was 3M that started, by cleaning up the site. And this is what it looked like... And this is what it looked like back literally a year ago. And you can sort of see it, but there's three excavations, 1, 2, 3, where the old dump site was, where they had the barrels. The barrels weren't there, but they were taken out in the 80s. But 3M excavated out all that soil that was, still had any kind of levels of contamination from those barrels. And that, so this is another example of that taken out. You can see a couple of staff here that are out there constantly taking samples of the soil to make sure that they got far enough till we got the clean, to clean soil, and then certainly put more, seeded it to prevent erosion happening. So 3M completed their work, and then the city did have a contract with the 3M contractor to start doing some of the work needed for our project. And we hope to get as much as we could get done in the spring. And as things go, as soon as our contract is ready to start, we had the March 29th snowstorm out there. And this is kind of was the, you'll see a theme here of this, on this project, so. So with that, we certainly had to wait a while, and we were able to start work finally in May. And this is what the site kind of looked like. You can see water here from the rainstorms or the melting snow. And then our contractor was able to actually do some filling there and put in some compacted soil that the building's, parking lot's gonna sit on. And there's a picture of that, a lot of water that had to be pumped and treated off-site. Oops, I'll go back. And then compacting the fill for the buildings. This is about where Area B sits right now, in that area there. So finally, it kept raining, and we just decided that it was time to stop trying to do this work until we let the full contract back in August that you awarded and the contractor get there and to just take over completely. So now we're in September, and this is after now the city owns the land. All the cleanup has been done, and you can see actually the great work the seeding did from the 3M contractor. We actually had grass growing out there. But we also had a lot of water that we also had to deal with before we could start doing more earthwork. So the Kraus Anderson team is there now hitting it, hitting this project hard. And this is a nice aerial photo with, you can see the earthwork going on here. But I want to point out, and I'll show some more pictures of this, this is the underground stormwater treatment system, the storm trap system, as we call it. And you can see the size of this compared to even some of the industrial buildings in the area. It's quite a large system. It's basically half a football field in square footage. I gotta catch up with my notes. So this is the slab being poured, and you can see also the workers here pouring the slab, big crane pumping the concrete in there. And these, this was probably a 14-hour day for these gentlemen, making sure that we could do this in one quick pour. And then they start bringing in these sections. You can see one section here being lifted in here. Each of those sections weighs eight tons, and there's 143 of them that were placed there. Thanks to artificial intelligence, I can tell you that's the equivalent of 200 African elephants. So I thought that was fun. So what's the completed system look like? This is, this is it right here, with the lid on there. What's gonna go over this is now about 18 inches of gravel and then the pavement. And this is, this is the part of the yard area for the public works folks. So all the water that falls on this site from on the roof, in the parking lot, it all will go into this system and be settled out, and it controls the rate. And then there's another little treatment thing that'll happen at the end of this. So when the water's discharged into the wetland, it certainly not only meets, but it'll exceed watershed district requirement. So this is really a significant environmental effort that the city has here, I think, that shows your commitment to protecting the environment here in Oakdale. So now we were able to begin in December, excuse me, actual construction of the building. And you can see some of the footing work going on. This is the corner of Area A, the office area. This is actually is where the employee training room is. This is the footings in Area C where the building operations are. And then we started to start putting up walls. And actually, this is the first, this was the first vertical construction. This is the elevator shaft. We're doing an elevator in the building with the two stories. And here's the first wall panel that was put up in February of 2025. I probably could have the exact date, but that was what it was. But you can certainly see the snow, and the crews kept working through the snow and cold in February that we had. And actually, with the frozen ground, that was great, be able to, because these cranes, you can imagine just bringing in these concrete planks. That alone is heavy, but let alone the crane. But then the ground thawed out and we're back to mud. And this was in March. You can see the mud that we were dealing with out there. This isn't the first building Kraus Anderson has built through the winter, and so they actually planned for this and constructed a road with crushed concrete from recycled concrete so the trucks could go get on that and not sink in the mud and keep the project moving ahead. So that was another, another great example of using this construction manager on this project. They're professionals, they know what's gonna potentially come their way, and they had a plan to deal with it. So just another couple comparisons where we're at now compared to architectural renderings. This is what the architect said the front of the building would look like, and here's where we're at now. So these two windows are these two windows right here. And this is around the corner. I don't, I didn't quite capture the front of this building yet here, but it's right, here's the front of the building being framed up. So people that come into the building will walk in right here at this point. And another example is this is Area A once again, what we, sort of the offices, and you can see the steel framing going up here. So you can see the two stories, you can see the elevator shaft there, the doors that people will walk through to get into the mezzanine that's also there. And then finally, one last picture, this is the operations area where you've got the mechanic space, like I say, the sign shop. This final one is the wash bay where trucks are gonna come in and wash, and there's a dry area also. And then you can see those doors here on this here. So it is, it is looking like the architect said it would look.
That's good.
Yeah, what a relief. Just quickly on the budget, just a couple snippets. We have paid out about 30% of the construction costs so far. You can see the number there. We do pay for materials that are delivered, even though they're not installed yet. And there are some materials that contractors have on supply, but we won't pay for it unless they verify that it's insured and taken care of in the right spot, and Kraus Anderson does that. So we just don't say, we just don't take it at their word like, oh, yeah, we got this stuff. We just haven't brought it there yet. So 30% of the construction costs have been paid, but we've also only used 10% of the project contingency to date. And those are so far 100% related to those weather conditions I've showed you, is frozen ground, muddy ground, water, and dealing with those which, but now we're out of the ground, and we're feel confident where we're at with the budget so far, working with Kyle and Chris and everybody else. Schedule-wise, we still are shooting for an opening next November/December. It's probably closer to the December date to have that certificate of occupancy, and Public Works can be operational there certainly then by January 1 of 2026. With that, Council, look forward to the next photo shoot, which will be, you'll have scissors in your hand versus shovels, and we'll go from there. But glad to take any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions for Don? College students, any questions for Don? It's a pretty cool project, here's a chance. Perfect. Chris, anything you'd like to add?
No, one thing. So we were very fortunate to get Don as owner's rep and then partner with our major partners, which was KA and HCM, our architects. We have had a really good team going on this project and the, with the involvement of all the Public Works staff and everybody else involved. This is quite an effort, right? And it's a huge project, and the council's been very generous in giving us some money to do this project, and the result will be something great for the community. So thank you, thank you to everybody, thank you to Kraus Anderson.
And thank you to our residents for approving the sales tax that's paying for this project.
Thank you, yes.
And the amendment to the sales tax that's covering the costs of this project. Don, thank you. Council presentations. Councilmembers, anybody have any?
I think I probably have the same one you do, so I'll defer to you.
All right. Is it about trees?
No.
Oh, what is it?
It's about the Gold Line.
Oh, yeah, I got that one.
Yeah.
Well, give an opportunity for follow-up if you have additional comments. How about that?
Noted, thank you.
Andy, Gary, anything?
None for me.
All right, I got a few. City crews began street sweeping this week, hard to believe, to clean up debris from the winter thaw. Please be sure to give sweepers plenty of space, keep your trash cans out of the street. We should be doing that anyways, like, year-round, not just when the streets sweepers are out. They need to stay on the curb. And please move your parked cars. Thank you for your cooperation as crews do this important work. It does keep a lot of organic material, as well as trash, out of our wetlands. It is a very helpful thing and a big endeavor of our Environmental Management Commission, so they appreciate it as well. Councilmember Moore mentioned this, online registration for the Pete Grasky Arbor Day Tree Giveaway will open Tuesday, April 1st at 8:00 a.m. In honor, in honor of Arbor Day, the city will hand out 200 trees free to Oakdale residents on Saturday, April 26th. Somebody said it was the 27th. 26th, is that right? Yeah?
It's the 26th.
It's that Saturday, last Saturday of April, we'll go with that. To those who have registered for a pickup time in advance, the limit is one tree per Oakdale address or household. More information about registration can be found at oakdalemn.gov. Also, the different types of trees are listed on that website as well. Also, every year, we have to make this pitch, these are not small trees, okay? These are bare root trees. Some years, they are like seven, eight feet tall. So please plan transportation accordingly. We always do our best to make it fit, but it's always a little funny when residents show up the day of, and they're like, I thought I was getting something in a pot. Nope. These are grown bare root trees to give your yard a head start on some foliage. So April 1st, 8:00 a.m., Tuesday, April 1st, registration opens. If you want a tree, you gotta get there. Last year, I think they were all cleaned in like two, three days, like, it went really fast. So this is always a great, a great event in our city. Winter parking rules prohibiting on-street parking from midnight to 5:00 a.m. ends on Tuesday, April 1st. However, big old caveat, a reminder that on-street parking is prohibited anytime we get two or more inches of snowfall. Hopefully, we are done with that, but we always put that out there to say it's not an automatic prohibition anymore, but if snow starts falling again, which it probably will, it's Minnesota, the rules automatically kick back in and cars need to be off the street. The city's indoor garage sale will be held Saturday, April 5th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Discovery Center. Great opportunity for bargain hunters to find some treasures. Please join us then. In coordination with the city of Oakdale, the Eberhard Group will be hosting its annual free community paper shredding event on Saturday, April 5th, also Saturday, April 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon in the City Hall parking lot. This is a great way to safely dispose of confidential documents. It is a drive-through event again this year. There is a 10-bag or two-box limit per person. So completely free event. A big thank you to the Eberhard Group, Real Estate Group, for sponsoring it again this year. It is always a very popular event, great opportunity to clean out your home offices and get rid of a lot of those papers and medical bills and sensitive documents that you don't want in the recycling bin. Come on down and join us Saturday, April 5th. Finally, as Councilmember Moore alluded to, it was a big weekend this last weekend. The Metro Gold Line Bus Rapid Transit Project finally opened. This project has been 15 years in the making. It is, it was a great celebration on Saturday with representatives from all the cities along the line. We had our members of Congress here who played a big role in securing the Federal Transit Authority funding, about 45% of the project. We heard from, we got a chat with a lot of people who will be utilizing the line. Like I said, this has been a very long process to get here. It has taken, the project has taken on many names over the years. I want to say a very special thank you to everybody who's been involved with it, from feedback from our residents on what development around Helmo Station should look like, to the elected officials that have come through this building and the county building that have worked on this project. I had the opportunity to speak at the ribbon cutting on Saturday, and one of my comments was four mayors and more than a dozen city council members have worked on this project throughout the 15 years. It is, it was a very, it was a very detailed project with a lot of communities having very different needs that they wanted along the route, but it is a very beneficial project for Oakdale when we think about $250 million in new development we're gonna see in our community because of it, more than 1,000 new units of housing, two new interstate overpasses. All of these things are good for the future of Oakdale. So the counties, Ramsey and Washington County, are sponsoring free rides on the Gold Line until, through Friday of this week, so please hop on, check it out. The buses are pretty amazing. I mean, free Wi-Fi and power outlets, so anybody that wants to head downtown and wants to do a little work along the way or commute to work downtown, great opportunity for that. But all in all, a very exciting opportunity for our community. So I think we are all pretty glad to be done with that. It's been a long journey, so. Anybody that participated have anything that I missed or want to add any additional comments?
I think, being the person who wasn't a part of this for 15 years, it was just really exciting to see all of the different people that showed up on Saturday morning to celebrate it. You know, we had transit riders, we had elected officials, we had interest, other interested parties, and just seeing everybody come together, that many people on a cold chili, chilly, maybe chilly, Saturday morning, I thought was really cool. And taking the ride on Friday night was wonderful. I now have my plan for my family for the wild game, and we have passes to the Science Center, so, you know, hopping on and taking it down and not worrying about parking is, it's easy, it's exciting, and it was really cool to be a part of it.
Thank you, Carrie.
I would just, I had the same comment as Councilmember Moore had about the turnout on Saturday. The full spectrum of people, right, like she said, rioters and elected representatives and former elected people who worked on this product were there. It was great to see, and I was surprised at the number of people there, so it was great.
And yes, it was chilly. Now, when we cut the ribbon on the Helmo Beelenburg Bridge, that was cold. That was five degrees. So I'm glad we did not have to redo that.
I did notice that the ribbon cutting was not 45 minutes like they planned, but instead was 60 minutes. My toes noticed that on Saturday morning.
If you put a dozen politicians on stage...
Oh, I knew it was gonna be bad.
That happens, but it was well deserved.
It was, indeed.
Yeah. Let's pay the bills. Claims roster in front of us, March 12th through March 25th, 2025, 3.8 million and change.